Call this regular council meeting of September 23rd, 2014 to order. Have a prayer moment of silence. Silent reflection by Councilmember Halter.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this opportunity to serve our community. We just pray that you would give us wisdom and you'd help us to do what's best for this community and be aligned with your will for this community. In Jesus's name I pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of belief.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brokaw?
Brokaw? Here.
Dries?
Here.
Halter?
Here.
Hermes?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Walther?
Moore?
Here. And without objection, we excuse Maria for not being here tonight due to, under the weather.
Under what?
Under the weather.
Oh, under the weather. It's kind of nice outside.
Terrible time to be not feeling. Okay. Approval of minutes. Minutes of the August 26th, 2014 regular council meeting, the September 9th, 2014 council meeting work session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of August 26th, 2014 council meeting and the September 9th council meeting work session as presented.
Second it. Hearing no corrections. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept the minutes as approved. And we have a couple changes to make. One, Beth Solberg was supposed to address at the start of the meeting here and she hasn't made it yet, so we'll, no objections, plug her in when she gets here. And then one of the items on the agenda, resolution, ordinance making supplemental appropriations, scratch that, we'll work on that, do that the next meeting. All right, this is the time for residents to comment on matters before council or to ask questions or concerns of them. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, and state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to two minutes. No one? No one?
It's a big crowd.
Yeah. All right, moving on. Reports of village officials, municipal manager Yvonne Kovak.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I do have one item that I want to mention regarding the Witten Road improvement project. It will, the water main portion, remember it's in two portions, the water main goes first and then afterwards will be our road improvements. The water main portion is scheduled to start on November 13th and will be completed around December 8th, hopefully as long as it doesn't get bad. They're going to hold the road improvement portion until...
Spring.
Spring, March. They're projecting to start in March and it will be completed by May, so hopefully we'll have no issues should we have snow with a torn up street. That's my big news right now.
Questions, comments?
Yeah. Can you comment? You sent a letter and I will give you a copy.
Oh, good.
You've sent a lot of letters, but I'll give you a copy of the one that I'm referring to with regard to the golf course and the foundation that has pumped in some significant money.
Sure, yeah. This is a thank you that I worked with Joel Suggs to send to Mr. McNair who heads up, I guess he's like the director of the Wadsworth Foundation, and they are the, that's the entity that provided $10,000 to go towards improvements at the golf course. So I just thought it was appropriate for the village to send a thank you for that grant.
Yeah. Great grant. It's very visible, the changes and upgrades that have been made. There's been some tree trimming that frankly has been needed for a long time and this is a $10,000 gift to the community, so I would suggest that you get your clubs and go see the gift to the community.
I understand it's improved your game considerably.
It has. I played Sunday evening and I did not lose one ball all the way around.
See, well, Joel gives mulligans too.
Yep.
I just wanted to ask about the sinkhole on, has that been taken care of? On Greenie, yes. Yes, they did actually show up one day, they were supposed to be there on a Friday, they actually ended up coming on Monday because they had another project that ran over, but yes, they did it, all in the same day it's done. Okay, great, yeah.
All right, law director?
Kind of asked Glenn.
It's good.
Law Director Jeff Forbes?
Thank you, no report.
Clerk of Council Catherine Lys?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All of the following were posted as required. The September 2014 community calendar and ordinance numbers 20,014,06, L and R, 09, F, and resolution numbers 2014, 19, C D, 20, C D, 21, C D, 22, C D, 23, C D, 24, F, 25, P N S, 26, F, 27, S N S, and 28, C D, as well as the time of the September 29th, 2014 Laws and Rules Committee meeting, which was posted at 4:00 PM. So if there are no questions, that would conclude my report.
Okay, hearing no questions. Chief Police Neil Erdeman?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to Capitol action on August 27th, we appointed Brian Johnson as Officer in Charge[428.24][428.24]/ Investigator. He's in charge of the Department of Shift Officers in the absence of supervisor and he's also assigned to investigate any complex cases. He's been with us 13 years and previously was a patrol sergeant before he went to part-time status. As was mentioned just a little bit earlier, we did take delivery of our 2014 Caprice Police Cruiser. It's been wrapped in its new graphic package that was picked out by our officers and will be outfitted within the next few weeks with blue lights and all the interior trimmers. On August 29th, Sergeant Luke's, Officer Rob White, and Eric Tricase attended a defensive tactics school, it was right down the road in Forest Park, and that was free training that was conducted by the Ohio Attorney General. On September 6th, we administered a police officer entry level examination next door at the American Legion Hall, and we had 17 applicants that passed that test and we will begin the interview process soon for the one open part-time position that we have. On September 11th, the middle school students from the second year in the room did a very nice thing for all of the first responders here in Forest Park in the township. And we had a number of our officers that attended. There were some very talented young men and women who read some poems, very talented elderly citizens. The part that I think I've always enjoyed the most, we had some Capitol time where we talked one-on-one with the students and were treated with extraordinary respect and the recipients were very, very intelligent. We did receive a comment on our website from a gentleman by the name of Patrick Schallenberger. He wrote about our police clerk, Vonda Sekoi. He said, "I wanted to comment that I'm a local employer who called in today to the Green Hills Police Department to acquire a police report for a candidate I am considering for hire. During that call, I spoke with Vonda Sekoi who went above and beyond, helped me with my needs. She was extremely customer friendly and I could not have asked for a better experience. Nonetheless, I just wanted to recognize her efforts and know how impressed I was with how she worked with me. Every community should be so lucky to have someone like her serving them." We're very happy to get those kind of comments. During the month of August, we investigated two traffic accidents, four crimes, 203 other incidents, a total of 792 contacts, 175 of those were dispatched by telephone or, and compared to 175 last August, 617 of those were self-initiated by our officers. We provided assistance to the public in 161 instances and we made 54 criminal arrests and 69 traffic arrests. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Questions or comments to the chief? Hearing none. Fire chief, none. Anybody have a report for the fire chief, fire department?
I am working with Tony to put together one call to invite people to join the department, so he's going to get back to me about that.
Good. And the brush drop is still...
MIA.
Yeah, MIA. Well, we know where it's at, but it's, we're not accepting it until it's right and it's not right yet.
Okay, all right. Okay, the mayor's report. And this time, I did not forget the court receipts, so I'll have them for the month of August and the month of September. For the month of August, the state received $970. The county received $55 and the village received, excuse me, the county received $1,812.50. The village received $8,350. For the month of September, the state of Ohio received $2,440.25. Treasurer Hamilton County received $75.75 and $10,186 went to the village of Green Hills. I have thanks to Maria and Jeff checking out the village, the plantings and landscaping, yard maintenance. We now have the awards that I need to sign and will pass out to 200 people approximately for the 2014 beautification award. And then Councilmember Walther asked me to read something for her for important informational meeting with the state legislators at the Sharonville Convention Center. And so the municipal league is hosting on October the 11th, Sharonville Convention Center, an informational meeting that covered current affairs and status of House Bill 5. These issues will impact the future financial planning of all municipalities. All elected officials, city managers, finance managers are urged to attend. Breakfast will be provided, no charge, beginning at 8:00 AM. Introductions beginning at 8:30 to 8:45. Discussion will start at 8:45. And we have, I'll give this to you, if anybody wants, from council wants to attend this meeting or if you want to get the information, it lists who will take the reservations.
Okay.
And that concludes my report. Okay? No questions on me? Committee reports. Does anybody want to do service and streets for Maria? Do you have anything to report?
No, I don't. Not at all.
All right. Community development, Councilmember Halter?
Sure. We have, as you know, Harvest Fest coming up on October 25th. We also are coupling up with Alois Alzheimer Center for Run for Good. If you're interested in running a 5K or walking one mile to help support that foundation, you can just give us a call, see the website. We, in fact, I need to get that posted if you can help me with that, Yvonne. The other thing is, we still have some vendor space available. I think Joel sent his in for golf and we've got a decent amount, but there's still some openings, so if, you know, if any small businesses that would like to have a 10 by 10 booth, all they need is a canopy and $35 unless it's a not-for-profit. We're waiving the fee for official not-for-profits. Great opportunity to meet the community and get the word out or expose people to your business. And I'm still in need of a Pooch Parade Director, so if anybody wants to step up and help out with that organization of that, it's pretty simple and straightforward. The run is at 3:30 and then the Pooch Parade is at 4:30. If we don't have somebody step up, we might pass on the Pooch Parade. We've had some people do costumes, we give out just like first, second, and third place for the Pooch Parade, but if you have interest, please let me know. Other things that, as I've mentioned before, is hot air balloon, weather permitting, we'll have tethered hot air balloon rides or straw and hay ride. It looks like there's the possibility of Butt Shack providing beer. They're checking into what they have to do on their end. Chainsaw carving, it should be a really good time, so if you have any questions about the event, just give me a call and the vendor forms are also on the website. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Okay, traffic and safety, Councilmember Brokaw?
Yes, we will be doing our second reading of the ordinance number 2014-08, traffic and safety, at the appropriate time. That is just an update to the police department ordinance. It was some housekeeping. If you have any questions, it's included. I know last time there was a little bit of, some of the track changes weren't very noticeable, but the chief was able to provide more. If you have any questions, you can approach him and ask him for clarification. We did have a meeting today, one housekeeping item. If anyone doesn't have their little photo identification on council, feel free to send your photo in to the chief and he will get you your badge made.
Goddamn.
So, and I believe that he went over the report, monthly report in the meeting, but he did a great job doing it again here, so any, that's about it unless there's any questions.
I've got a whole list.
Moving on.
You haven't taken any serious reading?
Recreation cable TV?
Well, that's me.
Right. Councilmember Hermes?
Hey, I'd like to...
Go ahead, let him go, we'll catch him. He can catch me back.
I didn't think it was next to mine. I'd like to just give a big thanks again for this year for Jim Miller and the Concert on the Commons. Another marvelous job of getting all the different types of bands together and being there on a consistent basis as much as he could. You know, I know we had several of them that were called off because of the severe weather, but what he does to get things organized and how he runs it is absolutely outstanding. And I really thank you so very much for all the people that were part of investing and having these people there. I know there's a lot of people that donated a lot of money to have certain events that happened for the Concert on the Commons and if it's not for that, they wouldn't happen and they got people coming from all around, you know, and all around Springfield Township and Wyoming and Evendale, they'll come and see this Concert on the Commons, there's nothing like it. So that's, just want to put that out there for Jim Miller, he's awesome. Also, I guess the community day at the pool, you forgot to mention it, Jeff. Yeah, I understood it was really a great time. I was not even there, my wife was there, but she said it turned out really nice. So it's good to kind of end that year with everybody to come in together at the pool again and having two days like that this year was really nice and people look forward to that and have a lot of fun. And you do a great job in getting that together too. Just want to let you know that, Jeff. I know I don't say a whole lot of nice things. We had our recreation commission meeting and just want to let you know that we'll be, all of us will be in full force there at the Harvest Fest and we will have our recreation commission t-shirts on, which Doug Kohler got together and I think you, did you design, Jeff?
Someone over on...
Is that right? Okay. Well, we're wearing those and it says on the back, if you have any questions about what you'd like to see in recreation, just tap us on the shoulder and ask. So we're looking for ideas. If you, people of Green Hills, we'll be responding.
Is all of that on a t-shirt?
Yeah, it's pretty small lettering. It's hard to read. If you're drinking, maybe you'll forget it. That's all I got to say.
Any other questions?
How about, about Waycross? I know there's an opening.
Oh, yes. Waycross does have an opening in the community, on the board. We had, somebody had to step down, so there is an opening, so you can actually, if you be interested in being a part of the Waycross Community Board, come and see me.
All right, moving on, and I think maybe I forgot jumping back, this design was also by Jeff.
He's a designer maniac.
Jeff, he's all over the place.
What an asset. So, and we'll need to clone Jim Miller, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, jumping back to finance and audit, Councilmember Dries?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
He did it on purpose.
I know he did. We also had a finance and audit committee meeting today and we continue to perform well in a tight budget. I'm just going to give you the year-to-date revenue and expenditure numbers for the general fund and for the total for, and I'm going to round off to the nearest thousand. So revenue, year-to-date in the general fund is $1,00159. Expenditures are $1,00109. And total revenue for year-to-date is $2,320,000 and total expenditures are $2,333,000. So we're doing okay. Not a lot of extra money laying around, but we're not in dire straits. We discussed an amendment to the tax code, we're doing a little more research on it. This was suggested by Rita. There was two court cases that, in Ohio, that had opposing opinions from different courts and Rita has suggested that we clarify a portion of our code with the definition of pension versus a, different types of retirement money. So we need to do a little research on that and we'll be coming to council with a recommended amendment. Talked about tax liens for grass cutting. As you are all aware, if someone doesn't cut their grass, it becomes an eyesore, we cut it for them and we bill them and if they don't pay the bill, we put a lien against their property and we'll have some legislation for that tonight. We've done some work on a supplemental appropriation, but we're going to wait till the October meeting, it's not quite finished. We will be selling some surplus property and I'll have a resolution for that. And this is somewhat almost mind-boggling to me. We just finished the 2015 budget and now we're starting work on the 2015 appropriation that we will discuss at the December work session and maybe some work sessions prior to that also, and then it'll be ready for the December meeting, so we'll have money to do things when the new year begins. We do not, one of our big expenditures with, on the personnel side is the health insurance. We do not have our rate information yet and we've started the, we're getting ready to start the property and casualty insurance renewal. So, and at the proper time, I have four resolutions for tonight.
Questions?
Oh, yeah. I, you know, I'm always hearing Rita, I've never met the gal. I mean, who in heck is she?
She is the amazing group of people, it's the Regional Income Taxing Authority and they do all, they handle all the income tax stuff for us.
So Rita's not a female and...
She is not.
It's an abbreviation.
It's an abbreviation.
Because my sister's name's Rita and I was thinking, eh, you know.
It's not her.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on, Intergovernmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Intergovernmental Affairs, Laws, Laws and Rules will be meeting next Monday, September 29th at 4:00 PM. Originally, this was scheduled for 10:00 AM, but we moved it to 4:00 PM to accommodate a committee member schedule. Their, the main topic of discussion will be concerning a review of the vicious animal Chief Erdeman wouldn't mind if you could put that on your calendar to just sit in and provide some input on that as well. Other than that, I noticed in our packet that the renewal of the Streets and Roads Levy has been designated as Issue 23 for the November 4th election. This is a renewal of the tax for the benefit of the village of Green Hills for general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges. Council very much supports this and it does not increase existing taxes. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have for my report.
Questions? All right, hearing none. Moving on to unfinished business. We have ordinance number 2014-08, T and S.
Yes, I'd like to do a second reading and then ask to approve ordinance number 2014-08, T and S, amending various sections of Chapter 153 of the Village of Green Hills Codified Ordinances. Whereas Chapter 153 of the Village of Green Hills Codified Ordinances governs the Village of Green Hills Police Department, and whereas the Chief of Police in cooperation with the Municipal Manager and Law Director has recommended a number of revisions to Chapter 153, and whereas it is the desire of council to amend Chapter 153 of the Village of Green Hills Codified Ordinances related to the Police Department. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring, Section 1, that Chapter 153 of the Village of Green Hills Codified Ordinances is hereby amended as set forth in Exhibit B attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. Exhibit A identifies the additions and deletions incorporated into the modified ordinances. Section 2, that all the, that all the sections of Chapter 153 not specifically amended herein shall remain in full force and effect. Section 3, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. I so move?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend various sections of Chapter 153 of the Village of Green Hills Codified Ordinances. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. Clerk of the Roll?
Brokaw? Aye. Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Moore? Sorry.
It's not a tie.
Ordinance number 2014-08, T and S passes, amending various sections of Chapter 153 of the Village of Green Hills Codified Ordinances. All right, moving on. Who wants to handle the Item 2, discussion of the community service organization's fundraiser at the golf course?
Moi.
Okay.
Councilman Hermes. I guess what we were discussing at the work session and we, basically, I guess, the GCSO, which is the Green Hills Community Service Organization, they're, this will be their fifth year for the fundraiser for the Tim Gentry fundraiser. Basically, the organization, they've been around for quite a long time and they usually do an outing in the evening with glow balls and basically it's, it's been this way for the past four years, I guess it's really just $20 they put up to go and just to golf, round of golf, and it's mainly the donation going towards somebody in need in Green Hills. One of the neat, I guess when I was golfing on it, not last year but the year before, they raised enough money and plus other things that they were doing that they got an electric wheelchair for a younger girl or boy, I couldn't remember, which they were in need, they were quadriplegic in this area and it was really neat, you know, it's something they needed and they couldn't afford and, you know, that type of thing, so. Just want to make sure, I guess, that they would like to have it again on the 25th, the same time as the Harvest Fest at the golf area, the Green Hills Golf Course, and I guess starting around eight or nine o'clock at night or something, and they do, they just do nine holes. So I just want to kind of get the okay, where the fundraiser basically it's where they, they wouldn't have to pay to play there, the $20 just goes direct... The $20 just goes directly to GCSO. It's just one of those things where they gather at least 30, 35, 40 people, just to be a part of that.
I think it's a great idea, and I support it. I do think we need to establish some kind of policy, just in general, on how we handle not-for-profits in the future. Just because, obviously, other groups would probably want to step up and do the same, and how do we manage that in a very good way?
Yeah, I agree with that, too.
I don't, I don't know that I'm entirely comfortable with just donating the time. I think, I think any time a benefit golf outing takes place on any other course, that certain, certain expenses of the golf course are, in fact, covered within the, within the fee charged. I know that there apparently were some understandings in the past regarding that. You know, I, I don't know if there were, there were miscommunication or misunderstandings between the parties last year that kind of led, led to this whole thing boiling up at this point. I think time at this, at this juncture is kind of, kind of important. They need, the GCSO needs to advertise the event and get, get things rolling. So, you know, coming up with some sort of plan, even if it's just for this year. But, you know, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to sign on to just carte blanche, give every, every group a free round of golf.
I think if it wasn't for the precedence that was set, doesn't mean we continue it. But I think for this year, because of the short notice, till we sort out what we want to do, I think it's, it's fine, for me, my perspective, to allow it to happen this year. But I see your point, and it seems like we have to discuss this maybe at a work session or something, and how we might want to handle it, and what kind of policy would make sense.
Yeah, I'm supportive of it, too, and I think Jack brings up a great point. And one of the things we have to remember, too, when this started, the village was running the golf course, and now we have a contract with a third party to run the golf course, too. So, I think they need to be part of the conversation to make sure that they're being treated fairly in it, too. But I'd like to see it go forward this year, and then after the event, get all the parties together and talk about what's the future look like. Because I've seen some of the great stuff they do, and it's, they do some amazing things, and sometimes it's incredibly quiet how they do it, and it's done with class.
Right.
So, I like the idea of, they, they're, the C in Green Hills Community Service Organizations are really big C, it's really big community, so.
All right. What do you feel?
I agree with Jeff that some kind of policy needs to be put in place. I understand timing this year is a little too short to get it done, and before this event, especially with the advertisement. But I think going forward, after this year, definitely, we need to have some kind of policy in place for other nonprofits and them to approach, however we set it up, either council or whoever's, the contractor or Yvonne, the manager, to have a request. And just so we can have it more.
Formal process.
Yeah, formal, more understandable, so everyone knows what they're doing going into it, and that going forward, we can set some kind of precedent for nonprofits and for charities.
Yvonne, did you have any comments, any issues or items that we didn't consider?
I don't believe so.
I know when it first started, Jane was in, and then Jane left, and then Dave took over for that, for that time, transition-wise. And then Yvonne comes in, so all of a sudden, you've got three events that were there just by, and so, I guess, passing it down, the information, what's going on, then we ended up having a contractor do it last year as opposed to Green Hills. So, a lot of changes have happened. That's kind of stayed the same, but I guess the, I'll blame myself for not, you know, making sure that things were known and how it was done. You know, just, just what even think, I just thought it was just, it's, everything's going to take care of themselves. So, but I just considered that'd be my fault. I'll take that load.
Okay, I have a question, then. Is this something that we should pass a motion on tonight? And then eventually, through work sessions, develop a policy?
If you need a decision tonight, then a, then a motion could be appropriate.
I think we probably should do that tonight. We add that at the end of the, at the end of new business.
I can do it right now.
Do it now?
Yeah.
Do it now? Okay.
Joel, did you, do you have any comments or anything? You good? Okay.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that the Green Hills Community Service Organization will entertain a fundraiser on the 25th of October, that, to where they can actually do it, to where there's no cost to them to, to golf on that particular night.
Second.
For, for this one year?
Yes.
My second remains.
Okay, we have a motion, and, and I don't think I can repeat what you just said on the floor, as it relates to the discussion we had on the fundraiser at the golf course for this year. Anybody else need any further clarification on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you.
New business. Thank you. New business. Ordinance number 2014-10-LNR, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to suspend the reading of the ordinance two times on two separate occasions.
Second.
And it's in entirety?
And it's in entirety. I'm sorry.
Unless you want to read the whole thing.
I'm, I'm prepared to read it anyhow.
That is up to you.
Any questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Nays. Ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor, I move to retain the emergency clause.
Since the charter change, you really don't have to do that anymore. But if you're more comfortable saying that, doing that, that's.
No. We'll go for moving to pass the ordinance.
All right. Ordinance, ordinance number 2014-10-LNR, an ordinance enacting and adopting the supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the Village of Green Hills, declaring an emergency. Whereas, the American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati High has completed the 2014 supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the Village of Green Hills, which supplement contains all ordinances of a general and permanent nature enacted prior to the.
Yeah, you don't need to read it.
Well, okay. I didn't.
Didn't you, I thought you included, and by title.
And by, entirely, entirely in order? Okay.
Okay. So, we just need a motion to accept this resolu, or ordinance, emergency ordinance.
Pardon?
You have to say you have a motion.
I have a motion to adopt?
No. I move to adopt.
I'm sorry.
We have a second.
I second it.
And do you want to make a comment on what this is?
No, I think I've commented quite enough. Thank you.
Do you want to make a comment as to what, what we're doing here, so if somebody wonders why we're doing this?
Periodically, all of our ordinances are sent to American Legal Publishing for them to put it in the format of our codified ordinances, the big, big book, and the one that's now on the website. So, this is simply confirming that that does represent the laws of the village.
And so, this covers all the ordinances we passed since the last.
Plus, it does, does a general review against the highway bias.
That's right.
And this is an annual event style.
Um, under American Legal, we can now do it quarterly, but once a year, I think it would produce the, the hard copy that you'll be getting after you pass this. But we can update, like the police stuff, as soon as that's active, we'll send it up, and you'll get the website version updated. So, that's in place.
Okay. Roll call vote on ordinance number 2014-10-LNR.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance 2014-10-LNR passes, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
You sure you don't want me to read it in its entirety?
No.
Okay.
Okay. And we scratched Item 2, and Resolution 2014-29-F, Resolution declaring the necessity of providing for control of blight and disease of shade trees. Councilmember Dries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a resolution declaring emergency, or declaring the necessity of providing for control of blight and disease of shade trees, whereas council for the Village of Green Hills has adopted 2014-17-F on July 22nd, 2014, declaring the necessity to provide for control of blight and disease of shade trees within the public right of way, and for planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing shade trees. And whereas, the Council of the Village of Green Hills has adopted Resolution 2014-26-F on August 26th, 2014, determining to proceed with improvements in accordance with Resolution 2014-17-F. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, the owners of all lands benefited by the improvements described in Resolution 2014-17-F shall be assessed at the rate of 50 cents per front foot, except corner lots, which shall be assessed, assessed at 75% of the total lot frontage, at a rate of 50 cents per front foot, to a maximum of $60 annually per single-family residence for the years 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023, and 2024. For that portion of the total cost of said improvements, as the same were estimated in Resolution 2014-17-F, said assessments not exceeding any statutory limitations. Section 2, such assessments shall be payable as provided in Resolution 2014-26-F, and shall be final upon adoption hereof. Section 3, this resolution shall be filed with the Clerk of Council of Green Hills and shall be available for public inspection. Section 4, the Clerk of this council is authorized and directed to cause notice of the passage of this resolution to be published once in a newspaper of general circulation in said village as required by law. Section 5, the Clerk of this council is authorized and directed to keep said assessments on file in his or her office for as, for so long as any of them remain unpaid. Section 6, the Clerk of Council is authorized and directed to cause notice of the levy of the assessments herein, provided to be filed with the county auditor within seven days of the passage of this resolution. Section 7, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
I second.
We have any questions on the resolution? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 2014-29-F, Resolution declaring the necessity of providing for control of blight and disease of shade trees, passes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2014-30-F, Resolution authorizing assessments on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills. Whereas, the village has given proper notice to homeowners of certain real property in the Village of Green Hills regarding the removal of vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris from the properties listed below. And whereas, the owners of said properties did not take action to remedy the violations, and therefore, the Village of Green Hills contracted to remove vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris, and now seeks to collect said expenses by authorizing the placement of a lien upon the lands and collect it as other taxes. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills. Section 1, that the village council hereby certifies that the costs of such labor, together with the expenses relative thereto, be filed on the return and statement of the Hamilton County Commissioners as an assessment against the properties listed and placed as a lien against the properties by the auditor of Hamilton County as follows. Address, 30 Imbler Bryant, Bryant H. Hubert, $278.59, 105 Ireland, Michael Nolan, $232.71, 105 Ireland, Michael Nolan, $93.19, 8 Gambier Circle, Jeffrey D. Richmond, $93.19, 10 Gambier Circle, Lakeside REO Ventures LLC, $180.74, 10 Gambier Circle, Lakeside REO Ventures LLC, $93.19, 50 Damon Road, Anthony G. Roberts, $232.24, 50 Damon Road, Anthony G. Roberts, $93.19, 41 Damon Road, Kathleen L. Norris, $232.24, 41 Damon Road, Kathleen L. Norris, $93.19, total $1,622.47. Section 2, all amounts collected as a result of this resolution shall be placed in the general fund of the Village of Green Hills. Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the, for the.
Move to adopt.
I move to adopt. I'm sorry. I got all caught up in this reading here. I move to adopt Resolution 2014-30-F.
Second.
Comments on this? Yes, I will provide some color.
Color comments.
This is people that are, in some instances landlords, some instances just don't want to cut their grass and clean up their place. We send them a notice, and if they don't respond to that notice, we actually have a contract with somebody to pay, to cut the grass, in most cases, and we send them the bill. If they don't pay the bill, we put it on their taxes.
Makes sense.
All right. Roll call.
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 2014-30-F passes. Resolution authorizing the assessment on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills. And they will not be getting one of these mayor's awards either, I don't think.
They will not be, Mr. Mayor. I'll continue on. Resolution 2014-31-F, declaring certain village property as surplus property, and authorizing the municipal manager to properly dispose of said property, whereas council has determined that there is certain village property that is not needed or is unfit for public use as set out in the Ohio Revised Code, Section 721.15. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, that the village property listed in the attached Exhibit A and included herein by reference is declared to be surplus property, no longer needed for municipal purposes or unfit for public use. Section 2, the municipal manager is hereby authorized to sell said property in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section 721.15, which authorizes the municipal manager to sell said property, the estimated value of which is less than $1,000, without any formal bidding procedure, or to sell said personal property or equipment that exceeds $1 million after advertisement for not less than two.
$1,000.
I think that's supposed to be 1,000. Yes, I'm sorry. I missed, I got more zeros in there. It exceeds 1,000 after advertisement for not less than two. in there. That exceeds 1,000 after advertisement for not less than two or more than four weeks to the highest and best bidder. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by the law. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any questions?
Just a couple of comments. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine items on this list, and none of them are worth a million dollars, or collectively they are not.
And then it is... It's municipal manager, not municipal manager.
That's right.
And I don't know what the mileage is on the Ford Ranger pickup truck, but I don't think it's very high.
Yeah, it's not bad. I think it's like 67,000.
Driven by a little old lady. And I'm sure the Prownt Vic police cars weren't driven by little old ladies and are not necessarily low mileage. Okay. It's been moved to adopt Resolution 2014-31-F. Roll call, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Resolution 2014-31-F passes, declaring certain vehicle... Village property as surplus property and authorizing municipal manager to properly dispose of said property. And get your bids in on those items. They'll be moving fast.
Since you brought that up, I mean, is there a way for anybody in the village to...
Yes, there is. We will put these on the Hamilton County auction site.
Okay. So, if anybody in the village would be interested, they would go find them on there.
They've been eyeing that cruiser or that pickup truck.
Or the Dell keyboard.
Oh, that's a hot item, yes.
Okay, moving on. You have one more? I have one more. Resolution 2014-32-F, Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. The council of the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio, met in session on the 23rd day of September 2014 at the Office of the Municipal Government, where the following members were present: Mr. Lee, Mr. ... Ms. Brokaw, Mr. Halter, Mr. Hermes, Mr. Dries. Moved the adoption of the following resolution, whereas this council, in accordance with the provisions of law, has previously adopted a tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year commencing January 1, 2015. And whereas the tax... Whereas the Budget Commission of Hamilton County, Ohio, has certified its action thereon to this council, together with an estimate by the county auditor of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by this council. And part thereof is without and part within the 10 mil limitation. Therefore, be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio, that the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and its certification be and the same are hereby accepted and further... And be it further resolved that there be and is hereby levied on the tax duplicate of said village the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the 10 mil limitation per Schedule A. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Call for roll call vote on Resolution number 2014-32-F.
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Resolution number 2014-32-F, Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Carries, passes. Okay, that's it on all of our ordinances, resolutions. And I'm not sure what happened to Beth.
Can we do calendar and then do... Can we reverse the order? That so the public hears the calendar.
Makes sense to me.
Can we find out somehow what happened to...
If she's not here right now, she's not coming.
Okay.
All right, let's do calendar. We have laws and rules.
Laws and rules meets in one week, Monday, the 29th, at 4:00 p.m. Also, just a reminder that the Wenton Woods Homecoming Parade is Friday, October 24th, and they're looking for council members to ride in a car, so...
Are you coordinating that amongst us?
No, but if I must, I must.
You must.
You must.
Thanks, Jack. Appreciate you doing that.
On October 15th, it's a Wednesday, we moved our Recreation Commission meetings because Tuesday was conflicting with a few people. Then... So, we moved it to Wednesdays, second Wednesday of the month, third Wednesday of the month, sorry. And at 7:00.
Traffic and safety will be before the next regular meeting, so it'll be Tuesday, October 28th, at 5:30 p.m.
One more plug for Harvest Festival on the 25th, starts at 3:00, goes till 10:00.
What time is the running end, Jeff?
3:30.
With the pooch gray tentatively.
4:30.
And is Service and Streets meeting on Monday also?
I don't know. I thought she was going to make it for the morning, didn't she?
She has it at 5:00 in the afternoon.
Okay, because I told her that I wouldn't be able to make it. So, I told her to make it in the morning if she wanted to, but I guess she...
She has translation scheduled for that morning, so...
Okay, gotcha.
What was the date?
29th.
29th.
Last time?
Five. Okay. All right.
I'd like to make a motion.
Beth has arrived.
Oh, sorry.
Everything stops.
Perfect timing, actually.
So, we'll revert back to having Beth Solberg give us an update on the National Historic Landmark Designation.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here again. Actually, the only thing I have to report to you this evening is that I would have... Is a new schedule. I would have started on this project more than a year ago, except last September, I had to move to New Jersey to live with my parents, both of whom have dementia, and my father, who also had other medical problems, that I had to get him through. And I was able to move them here so that I can be of more help to them and so that I can operate more normally. But... So, anyway, that is why I have nothing to show you on NHL nomination. It's not for lack of interest, or intention, or ability, but it is for lack of concentrated time when I can focus on this project. So, I am very sorry about this. I apologize. I know there's a lot of people who are supportive of preservation who have been very disappointed that this hasn't moved forward more quickly, and I regret it very much. But I... But if you will allow me to continue on the project, I would like to finish it, and I propose to have it done by July 1, 2015. So, that's nine months from now. And it's a multi-step process. It involves producing a research design and context statement, condition survey, at least three weeks of research, probably four weeks to complete a first draft, providing a midpoint report, submitting to the Ohio Historic Preservation Office and the National Park Service for their comments back, then revisions, and production of a second draft, then another submission, review again by the State Historic Preservation Office and the National Park Service, and then any further revisions and production of a final draft. So, it is a fairly long process, but necessary. So, that's... I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just want to let you know, I feel for you. I can't imagine having two parents having dementia. My mom has dementia severely, and it takes the life out of you to see them deteriorate like that. So, I don't worry about what's going on, because I understand.
Thank you.
But I think I'd love to have her continue on, because I know you would do a marvelous job. I don't know what the rest of council feels.
Yeah, I think you did the right thing. You took care of the most important thing for...
Well...
Sometimes in life, the rest of us can wait.
Amen.
There wasn't anyone else that could do it, honestly.
Well, even if there was, you were the one that stepped up and did it, and I think that's commendable and admirable. You know, you have such history with us, and you know us so well, and we have such confidence in you. I'm very supportive of you moving forward with the project. Can you give us maybe some milestones, or some... You know, we're sitting here in late September. The project should be done somewhere around July 1st. At some point, you don't have to do it tonight, but can you give us, hey, by January 1st, we should be here, or first we should be here? I think that'd be good for us.
Yes, I actually started to do a new schedule, and it needs a little more work, but I will provide it to you the next day or so.
Great, that's fine.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Do we have to do anything contractually with Beth?
Um, we'll be...
Do we have to amend anything? Do we...
Well, amend or just pass anyway. Do they give you a new proposal?
I don't think we need a new proposal. I would just ask you to look at it so that we are...
Does a contract need to be extended or something?
Right, exactly.
Like an addendum to it or something?
Oh, we'll look at that. Given the dollar amount, I'm not sure council would have to pass it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, thank you for your understanding. I mean, I did invest... We all invested quite a bit of time in applying to the National Park Service and getting them to visit here and getting their guidance on how to approach this, and so I would like to see it through. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you very much, Beth. Hey, could you hang around for...
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Halter?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to convene to executive session to discuss the sale and purchase of real estate.
Second. After a five-minute break?
After a five-minute break.
Roll call.
There is no intention to take...
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go into executive session, and no action will be taken after we adjourn from... Come out of executive session.